Twenty Common Council meeting to order. Clerk Jones, I believe that you would like to make some comments regarding the need for this meeting and expectations.
Yes, I would. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good quality, audio quality for the council and for yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat directions, and directions to do so are in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and your address as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. In addition, for citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert into the following into the chat, and the council president will call on you during the relevant time for public input. Insert your name and your address, and you will then be given five minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Due to the executive order by Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb, the South Bend Common Council meeting will be legally held by way of virtual meeting by using Microsoft Teams applications. At this time, our invocation will be given by Councilmember Henry Davis if he is online at this time.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you so much. No problem.
Heavenly Father, we would like to ask for your guidance and your thoughts over this particular council meeting. We ask that we lead and also engage with the mind of godliness, but also with the mind in order of what we set out to do and why we campaigned to be on this particular council. We thank you for understanding, we thank you for mercy, we thank you for grace. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you for that invocation. Mrs. Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Present.
Councilmember Davis?
Present.
Vice President McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Warner?
Here.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
President White?
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you. Prior to going to the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes, I would ask for a moment of silence in honor of the late Attorney Tom Broden, who was a champion for civil rights and the rights of others, who is the father of Judge John Broden and our former councilwoman Joe Broden at this time. A moment of silence in honor of who he was and in honor of his passing as well. We'll now move to the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
Report of Subcommittee on Minutes to the Common Council of the City of South Bend. The Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the October 26th and November 9th, 2020 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to accept the Subcommittee minutes as we have received.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you. The reports from the Subcommittee on Minutes have been received and approved. There is no special business. I would like to make an announcement for those of the public who are waiting to hear and to speak to Bill 57-20. This bill will be continued indefinitely as requested by the sponsor. So we'll now move to reports from city officers. We have an update from our mayor, Mayor James Mueller. After his presentation, councilmembers, you will have opportunity to ask at least two questions.
Thank you, President White, and good evening, councilmembers. Appreciate the invitation to give an update on a few things. Obviously, the most, the thing on everyone's mind in the last couple of weeks is the rise of COVID-19 cases, where we had been doing fairly well keeping it contained and the spread from accelerating until late September, and that acceleration has continued, although recent days shows some ability of us to contain it from just completely continuing out of control. But with, even if the case has plateaued at the current rate, which is in our county about 100 per 100,000 people, if we maintain that rate for the next three months, a third to half of our population in the county would become infected over the next three months. So it's, we're not at a good level, but it's at least a good sign that for now we've stopped the ascent in the number of cases per 100,000. We are, of course, concerned with the cases already built in. There's a lag between new cases and hospitalization. So even if they dropped, cases dropped substantially over the next week, the buildup that's been happening will likely lead to an increase of hospitalizations over the next coming weeks. And then, of course, the Thanksgiving holiday has health experts very concerned about what will happen to the spread as people contemplate gathering. And, you know, the advice from our health officials locally and those nationally is, if, you know, is basically, please protect the ones you love and do not gather indoors with anyone outside your household for Thanksgiving. So if you're, you know, you're already living together in a household, certainly that's good to celebrate the holiday, but try to avoid indoor gatherings. Even with masks, six feet prolonged exposure indoors is not sufficient to keep your loved ones safe. And this all comes as, you know, there are positive news about a couple of vaccines that are 90 and 95% effective, and hope that within the coming months we'll start to see those deployed. So we're looking toward the, we can kind of see the light at the end of the tunnel on this pandemic. You know, this current wave is expected to last through January, maybe into February. But, you know, next spring, you know, there'll be some dark days ahead here, but next spring we should be getting out of this wave, and hopefully vaccines will be available, at least in part. And then, you know, by summer, next fall, we could be closer to what we all know is normal. And so we've just got to not let this get out of control over the next couple of months. It's already out of control, but we just really need to do, double our efforts to contain it. And that means some sacrifices here during the holiday times where we love to gather and be with our family and friends, but it's not the time to do so. It's not safe to do so. And this resurgence of the virus, as well as some waning impacts of the CARES Act from the federal government, has led to a stalling of our economic recovery. So the recovery was robust, it was quick, and, you know, things were looking good until September, October, and that stalled, and we know that folks are in a lot of financial uncertainty and facing a lot of burdens in the days ahead. We did, on the CARES Act note, we did receive our reimbursement from the state, the 3.3 that was allocated to cities. Basically, the Secretary of Treasury Mnuchin changed the rules in September where we could get reimbursed for public safety expenditures, whether they were budgeted or not, going into 2020. And the Indiana State Finance Authority also approved that and actually encouraged us to receive the reimbursement through public safety expenditures rather than these other programs. So what had been a very onerous process of proving to the IFA of what expenses were eligible, and they had also restricted, placed additional restrictions on municipalities in terms of what qualified, including economic development projects or programs. So this is good news. The money is in the bank, but that changes some of the ways we were accounting. Most of these will be cleared up as much as possible. It's very confusing when our controller, Dan Parker, does the end-of-year cleanup with the fourth quarter bills that are on first reading tonight. The other piece is, the other part of the CARES Act where we received a substantial amount of funding was through the federal funds, and that was, and the one that was outstanding was the third installment of the Community Development Block Grant. And so we're moving on releasing an additional $485,000, which was that full distribution. And they had, they had not restricted it, but strongly encouraged it to go toward rental and utility assistance. And so that's the plan to deploy this last installment of nearly half a million dollars toward additional rent and utility assistance. With the city bills as a utility provider, we have about 4,500 accounts at high or medium risk, which means that they are 60 days or over past due, and there's about 300 additional accounts each month that are moving into the high risk, which is over 90 days. And this leads to about $165,000 per month of collections that we're not able to make, and the aggregate by the beginning of 2021 is looking to be close to $2 million. There is a bill on first reading, an ordinance to increase the customer assistance program, and that's looking to increase that help to the lower-income households that are falling behind by 50% increase on the benefit that was approved last year. And this is in recognition that folks are falling farther behind, and also, you know, the, what the economists project as the K-shaped recovery, where those households making, you know, above the median income are doing okay, and the households doing below are getting hit more and more. And so that bill is looking to expand the program, one, to help address this issue, and also to assist in collecting, because, you know, we have to be able to fund our different utilities, and we can't squeeze people who don't have money to pay for the things we need. So that's, you know, that's under, I think, first reading tonight, so that's coming up. And then going into the first quarter of 2021, we will look to bring a full utilities plan that includes how do we move past the uncollected debt, the issues of folks' ability to pay, as well as our needs with the various parts of our utilities. And as you know, there's also a bill that's coming up here to provide some bridge financing for our solid waste team that's been needing some sort of longer-term solution for over a year now, but this was not the time during the pandemic to take those longer-term actions. So there will be some shorter-term financing coming here in the next couple of weeks to make sure we bridge until we have a longer-term solution. So first quarter 2021, we'll try, we'll work on a full plan to figure out how do we pay for the things we have to pay for in our utilities and solid waste, while not, while be, in recognition that a lot of our folks are still hurting and probably will, even if Congress does act, will still be hurting then as well. The other news is restaurants with the weather turning are struggling. There was a survey in late August that National Restaurant Association found two in five restaurants in Indiana will likely be out of business within the next six months without improved economic conditions or further government assistance. And so the team is working on some limited innovation grants, and that, I believe, the funding for that will be included in the COVID-19 response cleanup upcoming. But, you know, that's not going to be, that's enough to help, little shot in the arm, but what's really going to be needed is Congress to step up both on unemployment insurance to keep our workers who are out of work afloat, as well as small business assistance to help our businesses, like especially those in the hospitality industry like restaurants, to be able to weather the storm and make it to the day where we're past this and we have a vaccine and we get back to closer to normal. So that's, so if Congress doesn't step, you know, we, there's really contemplating the idea that Congress won't step up, they just have to. But, you know, we'll keep monitoring, and we want to work and help our small businesses as best we can. So that leads to the emergency shelter, which I know council was looking to get an update on. And so the city-funded weather amnesty is the first component, and that'll run through April, the end of April 2021, as in past years, with budgeted city funds. And this year, the change will be COVID-19 restrictions and protocols in place. And so that leads to about being able to house about 30 to 50 at the Salvation Army Building, which is administered by Hope Ministries, and then 25 sheltered at the Center for the Homeless. And other organizations are stepping up this year to provide additional options, given the pandemic and the protocols that are required. Then the county undertook a motels program to build off of the program established by Our Lady of the Road anonymous donors. The county is funding rooms at three-area motels, as well as Our Lady of the Road's outreach workers and food delivery costs for six months. And the estimated costs that the county are covering for this program from October 2020 to March, through the end of March 2021, is $570,143. And then as part of this, the Oak Lawn had come with a proposal for wraparound services and for about 150 individuals, and this is meant for both of those folks that are taking advantage of weather amnesty, as well as the county's motels program. And this will run through the end of weather amnesty, so seven months through April. And the funding utilized for this was the second COVID distribution of the Federal Emergency Service Grant Fund, and it was $413,000 for the seven months. And this is budgeted for seven coaches, three case managers, and a halftime coordinator, and their role is to get insurance, Medicaid, and any other form of support in place for an individual, as most of these individuals do not have that in place. And then once the, these case managers get individuals their support in place, then they can be moved to the existing Oak Lawn case managers. As it is without this program, the existing case managers aren't able to collect for these types of pre-services to get them, to get their support in place. And so it ends at May 1st, but if individuals have agreed to and are in Oak Lawn's psychiatric or addiction treatment, they can continue on with case management. And then finally, as you know, and council's been a good participant and leader in our homeless implementation group, the three subgroups, as well as the full group, are working to finalize recommended steps by the end of the year, and we'll have more to report when they do so. So with that, I'll turn it over to any questions council may have.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller. I'll now turn it over to councilmembers. If you please raise your hand if you have questions that you would like to ask of the mayor based on his presentation, his update. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or comments? Councilwoman Rachel Thomas Morgan?
Thank you, President White. I don't have a question, just a comment. Thank you, Mayor Mueller, for being with us this evening and for your update. I want to just thank you in particular for the update on additional rental assistance. I know you and I had talked about that over a month ago, anticipating the end of the year and how dark the first quarter, the beginning of the year, will look, and you're hoping to be able to receive and appropriate those funds, and I'm just glad to hear that we'll be able to have additional rental assistance available for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Good evening, Mayor. I also do not have a question. I just wanted to thank you and your counterparts in the city for moving so quickly on getting the wraparound service money to the people in the motels for now. I'm always on that city-county meeting every other week, and those that are working with the homeless in that program say that this has made a significant impact, very positive impact. So I just wanted to thank you very much for moving on that so quickly.
Thank you. That's great to hear.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. I see one hand up, but I cannot tell who that person is, or is that a hand that was raised? And I want to make sure, councilmembers, do you have any questions or would like to ... I'm sorry, Councilman Henry Davis?
Yes.
Okay, please.
I want to kind of like turn around just a little bit, or maybe make a U-turn. I know we're talking about dollars, and we're talking about revenue and the lack of or the slowing of revenue because of the pandemic, but I want to start this conversation now, since we're turning over the year here soon. I think it will be a credit to us, even our Public Safety Department, to begin to talk about how do we support our dispatchers at a higher level. We rarely talk about dispatchers when we talk about public safety, and I know for a fact before I get to Officer A or firefighter A, I have to talk to the dispatcher first. And so I think that, you know, at some point in time, very soon actually, you know, obviously when the year turns over, I really want us to begin to talk about how we can support them at a higher level. If we're going to pay our officers at a higher level, I certainly believe that we should have the opportunity to support the dispatchers at a higher level as well.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Councilman Kenneth Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all of the hard work you've done in your first year as mayor. Probably wasn't what you expected, but we certainly appreciate you being in the office and getting some things done. A quick question for business owners who are struggling based on COVID. What resources are available to them? There's a particular printer in town who's family-owned, and he's very concerned because, you know, he went from making a lot of money during, before the pandemic, to just trying to keep the lights on. What opportunities or resources are available for those business owners who are finding themselves struggling?
Yeah, I mean, there is a great need across multiple industries, not just the hospitality. The federal programs were the most substantial, or in terms of dollars amount. The PPP loans in particular that were forgivable basically gave two and a half, the three months of operations to businesses to go through the shutdowns and beyond. So those kind of, if you think of it in timeframe, those kind of ran out in end of June, end of July. Then the state has used some of its CARES Act allocation to have various different programs, and we can get a, we can get a list of those to you, and so you can share. And then the city has done, we don't have nearly the kind of resources, we didn't receive our CARES Act distribution directly, so we never got the full amount, and the IFA had restricted our ability to use those for economic relief. And so we haven't had the same kind of resources, but we did, there was a portion of the second distribution of CDBG dollars that went to resiliency grants to small business owners that qualified. And, you know, with this, this isn't a restaurant, but we're looking to do something for restaurant innovation to try to help them innovate and make it through the worst, which the winter provides. So I think, so in terms of locally, we don't have a lot of dollars, but, you know, I would encourage any business that's struggling to reach out to our team, because we are, this is something that's front of mind, that how do we support our economic recovery? How do we support our small businesses through this difficult time? And, you know, if nothing else, we can, you know, if we don't have the resources, we are in conversations with leaders at higher levels that we can highlight needs and hopefully get programs to support our businesses, not just here, but across the state or across the country. So I think, please, reach out, and so we'll get that list to you, and then encourage folks to reach out to our team to see what, how we might be able to help.
Who would be that contact person for the city that, for us to reach, for businesses to reach out to?
I put Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development, you know, and also, I forgot to mention that our Director of Community Investment started a week ago today. So Santiago Garcis is acting and current in the role of Executive Director of Community Investment. So also, councilmembers, feel free to reach out to him as well to get a rundown on what's going on.
Thank you. I see Councilman Troya Warner, followed by Councilwoman Michelle Niskoski.
Thank you, President White. So in that crystal ball, Mr. Mayor, that you have, and some of those higher-up contacts, I know you alluded to it, and we've talked about it before, but really, for a lot of these businesses, they're going to need kind of, some kind of large assistance that's got to come from the federal government. We just don't have the funds to do it. Any kind of guesses or crystal ball you can gaze into to tell us when we might see another stimulus and additional funds come down that we can get to these small businesses? As Pastor Lisa, every business I talk to, they're just barely hanging on, they're kind of struggling. The recent spike has really taken a toll on them. And then with every small business, there's always employees. I know we've probably got tens of thousands of employees in the restaurant business who, you know, they're also just hanging on, they're worried about their jobs. Any thoughts on when we might see that?
Well, I mean, we are hopeful that there will be a rush with the new administration. I know the new administration is going to push it as a number-one priority, and, you know, the House of Representatives, which shares the same party affiliation, will push it with the same urgency. The question always is, is how fast will the Senate act? And then even once it gets passed and enacted, how fast can the funds reach? You know, so there's a few weeks, if you remember from the spring, getting that much money out, it took a number of weeks to get that out. So I would hope that it would get passed by the end of January, so at least end of February, but, you know, that's an optimistic timeframe. It could get bogged down in Senate discussions, and as we know, businesses needed, and individuals on unemployment, need that help yesterday. So the idea of waiting another three months for help to arrive is, you know, so with that urgency in mind, hopefully the Senate will not cause issues, but, you know, we don't know the final makeup of the Senate until the Georgia runoff, you know, but assuming it's split government, and the last time we and the last time we had a need for a stimulus, it was actually the, you know, it was flipped a little bit. The Democrats controlled the Senate. But I was working in the Senate at that time, and there was an effort to court, it was, you know, needed to get past the filibuster, so it had to be bipartisan, even though, and get all of those remaining senators. And so it took longer, and they didn't get as big of a package as they wanted. And as time shows, it wasn't, it took, it stalled the recovery. The recovery was not as quick. It took many years for things to start, for the unemployment rate to really drop. And so one of the central issues at stake, 10 years, you know, it's just 11 years ago, was whether to provide aid to states and local governments. And as you saw over the summer, that was a sticking point, again, between the Senate and the House and even the President. So I have to imagine that's going to be a sticking point, as well as how much of an unemployment, pandemic unemployment benefit to give. So Washington is hard to predict. You know, in April, or March and April was great. We were all in this together. We had never seen the Senate and Congress and the President, different parties working together. I hope we get back to some level of functioning for the good of the country, rather than partisanship and blaming the other side. Who knows? There's a hope. I mean, you know, the President-elect is someone who has a history of working across the aisle, and also has a history in his previous role as Vice President, working with the Senate Majority Leader, if it stays, Mitch McConnell. So we got to remain hopeful, because the alternative is, there's just, the economy continues to be strained, and that's not something anyone, regardless of your party or ideology, should accept or tolerate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski, followed by Councilwoman Sharon McBride?
Thank you. Thank you, President White. And thank you, Mayor Mueller, for being here tonight for the update. I just wanted to, had a question. The half a million dollars, you said it was CARES Act money, I believe? And you were looking to help assist in applying for rent utilities, excuse me, assistance for people that are primarily behind? I mean, have you looked at a way where you're identifying people that may be two or three or four months behind, whether it be through the utility bill, and then notifying them that there is assistance, and then in fact assisting them? Because I hear that there is a bit of an issue with people applying, and then they're getting rejected because of a box they didn't fill out, and they got to reapply again. And landlords that have renters that are behind, some of them have renters who just don't want to apply. And they're still living in their, you know, rental property, but there's assistance out there. So is that what you are referring to, in helping them to apply for and assist with these additional $500,000? I mean, I think it would be great if there was a plan, we could do that. But are we just looking at, in general, to let people know that the money's available?
Yeah, so, I mean, that's the challenge of any program is, you want to try to get as many of the dollars to the people that need the dollars? Because, you know, we're stressing the need is likely greater than the dollar amounts we're contemplating here. But then, of course, there are administrative costs to get the dollars to the folks who need them. And in some ways, whatever you call it, marketing, or how do you make our residents aware that the program is out there? And so, you know, primarily, we'd be looking at trying to move to what our prior assistance was. But if there were gaps in terms of marketing or getting the information out to residents, or help in applications, that's a little tougher, but we could see how we could augment the programs that we've had so far.
Okay. Thank you. And my second question would be in reference to the hospital capacity. Has there been discussion in reference to COVID and the hospital capacity of where we're at and where it looks like we may be going to?
So, yeah, I mean, that's a great question. Our health systems are regional. And so the challenge here is, the wave is coming all at once. So I think there was a, I don't want to say complacency, but throughout the summer, where there were waves that were happening, not everywhere all at once, you know, it changed, there was a change of strategies at the state level, whether you would build field hospitals, or what would you have to do to maintain, or to cover a big wave? And so there had been thought that you could shift around to different regions, as different regions, you know, got an explosion of cases. The challenge here is, it's all across the state. And then particularly in our region, we're at like 100 cases per capita, or 100,000. And our neighboring county, Elkhart, is, you know, 40% above that, 140. And their health system, we all interrelate with St. Joe Hospital, Beacon, Southern Clinic. All of our health systems are regional here. So so they don't, there's no crystal ball. They've already had to shut down a lot of, you know, a lot of elective procedures, a lot of preventative things. And they are worried that, you know, there are going to be emergency calls that are going to be difficult to field because the COVID ward is overflowing. And in some ways, it's already there. The rise of cases that we've already seen is likely to bring the number of hospitalizations up from where we are today. And then if you add on top of that any additional increase over the next couple of weeks due to Thanksgiving, or whatever else people are doing, there's a real concern that this is going to get, this could get, has the potential to get very ugly in December.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sharon McBride?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for your presentation. I just had a question outside of your presentation to ask if you've heard any formal response from the Housing Authority regarding the Rabbi Shulman Building and our request to meet with them, if you can elaborate.
Sure, yeah, I mean, and thank you for, all of you, for signing on to that letter to help get more answers for the residents at Rabbi Shulman and the broader community. They did send a letter back from the attorney, and I believe we forwarded that on to council. But hopefully, we can, if you didn't receive that, we can resend that. And they're open to scheduling a conversation with council. And it's just got to, with the holiday and other things, just figure out the right time. One of the things that was cleared up in the response was the, where we are in the process. And we did not, you know, there was the meeting in the parking lot with the residents of Rabbi Shulman from some members of the Housing Authority that said you have 30 days to get out. And so then, you know, we were looking to get, one of the key parts of the letter was asking to get their relocation plan out and made available to the public. And they didn't, as of when they wrote last week, they did not have a final relocation plan. And the clock to move residents doesn't start ticking until that is finalized and approved by HUD. And then there's a counseling meeting that they have with every resident. So that's 60, so there's at least 60 days from whenever they get form, final approval from HUD on the relocation plan. So that's the, you know, there should be, there will be efforts with every resident to find a spot. And they're awaiting HUD to see what, you know, what kind of vouchers, what kind of options that will be available to the residents. So hopefully, we'll hear back soon to know what is the, you know, what's the future for those residents? What can we expect? And then we can go from there on what, as a city, we'd like to see.
Thank you. I'll yield my time.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, I would like to thank the mayor for his comprehensive report, and also the items that you shared with us. Those were topics in which the council members had requested additional information. I do believe that your update has been very well received and very much needed. So I thank you for the update coming from you as mayor of the city of South Bend. I will now ask for a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor of the motion will now go to roll call. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that would be given a second reading in public hearing have been first, given a first reading and set for committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed, and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. We will start with Bill 5720. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 5720 a second reading?
5720. Public hearing? Excuse me, Councilwoman Niskoski, you would need to have Bill 55-20. Is that what you're reading now? 55-20?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it is 55-20.
55-20.
No, I'm sorry.
No problems.
Okay.
There is a hand up. I don't know who this hand is.
It's Mr. Nusbaum?
Yes, we're getting ready. He may have caught the same thing. So we're going to go back to Committee of the Whole, and Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski will ask the clerk to read Bill 55-20.
Thank you for the clarification. My apologies, Clerk Jones. Could you please give Bill 5520 a second reading?
Yes. 5520. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the following described property. The first east-west alley between St. Vincent Street and Howard Street, from St. Louis Boulevard to First North-South Alley, Councilmanic District 4, South Bend, Indiana, 46617.
Thank you. And there was a committee on the Chair of Public Works and Property Vacation, and that was sent to council, full council with a no recommendation. So is the petitioner present? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I am Richard Nusbaum. I'm an attorney practicing law here in South Bend. And my address is 225 South Sunnyside Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46615. First of all, want to thank clerk's office, and in particular, Rachel Holt, who's going to be assisting me. She assisted me at the council, at the committee meeting, and will be assisting me in my presentation that hopefully will help the full council get a better clarity in terms of our presentation, plus clarifying some of the things that were brought up at the committee meeting. So this first slide is the alley that we are seeking to be vacated. Roger Woodard and Mark Hubbard are the petitioners. Roger is to the south of the alley, and Mark is to the north of the alley. And they are the owners for the entire 165 feet of that east-west alley. You will look to the left there, coming down from St. Vincent Street, there is an alley there that we propose will become the ingress and egress for the properties that are located within that block if this alley vacation is granted. One thing that I think is very important to look at, because there were some questions raised about lot lines and things like that, this depiction from the City Department of Public Works is based upon the Platts that were filed legally, the Irish Realty subdivision. There are actually three different subdivisions, three different minor subdivisions that helped to set out the lot lines for Roger Woodard's property and those lots to the south. You might notice that the north-south alley coming down from St. Vincent Street ends, the alley ends at Roger Woodard's property. The alley at one time went from St. Vincent Street all the way down to Howard Street. However, with regard to those Irish Realty subdivisions, that alley was vacated. You might ask, well, how in the world do those properties near Howard Street get access? Well, in the subdivision process, there were easements that were granted over private property for those properties south of Mr. Woodard to be able to get access. So there was a statement made at the committee meeting that, number one, we needed to be sure of our lot line. We are very sure of our lot line. Number two, that the hammerhead easements that we will talk about soon are on the public right-of-way. Once this alley is vacated, there will not be any public right-of-way that these hammerhead easements will be located on. Whether they're on public right-of-way or not, we are going to make sure that there is adequate access, as if there was public right-of-way, from East Vincent, from the north and East Vincent Street all the way down, past Mr. Woodard's property, past the lot that's south of him, down to those houses that are at front on Howard Street. This is a project that my clients have been at for almost two years now. In late 2018, they came up with a plan. They began to canvass the neighborhood at that point. There was overwhelming support for this alley vacation in the neighborhood. So they filed an application to have the alley vacated in March of 2019. Can you go to the next slide, Rachel? So this is the primary reason why the petitioners are seeking to vacate this alley. First of all, it is rarely used, rarely used. Secondly, there was something about that Mr. Woodard had access from that alley. Actually, his access to his garage is from the north-south alley, actually, on his property. So this east-west alley provides access to no one in terms of a garage. That is all either by the streets or by the north-south alley. As you can see, there is significant flooding that occurs. Councilmember Warner was present. When I took this picture, it was in the summer. And as you can see, it was a very moderate rainfall the night before. And this is kind of what it looks like. You go out there today with the rainfall that we had yesterday, it's pretty much the same deal. So the plan is, number one, to have the alley vacated, to re-landscape over the alley, and to cut off any access from St. Louis Boulevard. So there will be no curb cut from St. Louis Boulevard onto this alley. So the planning that has taken place in this neighborhood whereby curb cuts were discouraged on public right-aways fits in perfectly with that plan. Next slide, please. This is another depiction. The left side is the east-west alley that we just looked at that had all the water in it. This was a dry day for the alley. And then on the right side is the north-south alley, looking down from St. Vincent Street and seeing some of the homes that are located down the alley, which would then become the ingress and egress for those homes. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the same alley. It's a little bit clearer in terms of what's in the neighborhood there. Uh, this is a picture of the same alley, it's a little bit, uh, clearer in terms of what's in the neighborhood there. Uh, there are evergreen trees on the left-hand side of the alley looking south. To the left of those evergreen trees is property owned by, uh, Mr. Hubbard, the petitioner who's on the north side of the east-west alley. And the other, um, uh, home there is Mr. Woodard's home, um, the north side of Mr. Woodard's home. Uh, as you can see, there are other properties down the street there. On the right side, there is some property that is, looks like it's unimproved, but actually is the backyard of some properties that already exist on Hill Street. Um, you can also see some new homes on the right-hand side. Um, that, that is the Crawford residence and the Kelly residence, and you're going to be hearing from them on this petition, they are in favor of this petition. But it's important to remember this particular photograph because there's a claim by Community Investment and Engineering that, um, the vacation of the east-west alley would somehow impact the development, uh, of properties, um, uh, which are located a, a, adjacent to this north-south alley. Next slide, please. Um, I know this is a very difficult, uh, slide to read, uh, but it is the, um, criteria in the state law as it relates to alley vacations. Um, as I mentioned at the committee meeting, this is a little different than from what you see most state statutes. Um, most state statutes say that in order to do something, you must meet certain criteria. This state statute is more like the Ten Commandments, it's a thou shall not kind of statute. Um, there are, there are, there is an ability to remonstrate, uh, but you can only remonstrate based on that four criteria. Um, the third and fourth criteria, no one has a disagreement that has, plays no play, no role in this. It's the first two criteria that the Community Investment Department and, um, Engineering claims are, um, um, the problem. Uh, there was a public hearing on this alley vacation on November the tenth, um, and, um, Mr. Hubbard and Mr. Woodard received a letter from the Board of Public Works, uh, says in part, "Reported Public Works at its November ten, twenty-twenty meeting, reviewed comments by the Engineering Division, Meeting, Fire Department, Police Department, and the Solid Waste Division. The following comments and recommendations were submitted."
Mr. Nusbaum.
Yes.
I'm gonna ask you to, when you talk, to keep your face towards the camera. When you turn your face, we can't hear what you're saying very well. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Uh, do you want me to start over?
Uh, we've
With the letter?
Kind of the last, uh, couple sentences have, have, we've been muffled and we haven't been able to hear those.
All right, I'll try to do a better job here.
Thank, thank you, sir.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reread the, the sentences that evidently were muffled. "The Board of Public Works at its November ten, twenty-twenty meeting reviewed comments by the Engineering Division, Community Investment, Fire Department, Police Department, and the Solid Waste Division. The following comments and recommendations were submitted. Community Investment and Engineering stated 'The vacation request violates the criteria of IC thirty-six dash seven dash three dash thirteen', which is the statute that is up on the screen right now. And here's, here's the reasons that they state. "The vacation would hinder the growth or orderly development of the unit or neighborhood in which it is located or to which it is contiguous." That's, that's one criteria that they, that, uh, Community Investment and Engineering say is present. The second is, "The vacation would make access to the lands of the aggrieved person by means of public way difficult or inconvenient." That second item is, which is criteria number two, involves an aggrieved person, singular. The aggrieved person was the neighbor who had some comments, uh, at the Board of Public Works meeting immediately to the south of Mr. Woodward. And in fact, that neighbor and Mr. Woodward have reached an agreement whereby that neighbor has withdrawn his objection. A copy of that agreement has been provided to the council attorney. And in effect, that second criteria is no longer in play at this point. With regard to the first criteria, um, it is, it is our opinion, and I think the evidence shows, that the only undeveloped land is towards St. Vincent Street north of the alley to which we're going to be vacated. We were asking to be vacated. That alley being vacated or not is gonna have absolutely no impact on the development of the land that can be developed towards St. Vincent Street. So it is our contention that the first criteria is not present. The second criteria was taken care of by the neighbor who said, uh, who came to the Board of Public Works and said, you know, I've got a problem with this. Now that neighbor doesn't have a problem with it. Then the next two criteria were admitted that, by the, by the, um, Board of Public Works, that they weren't applicable here. So all, none of the four criteria are present. Now at the public, uh, at the committee meeting, there was a lot of discussion about dead-end alleys. And it's pretty clear that, uh, Community Investment doesn't like dead-end alleys. And I'm not saying that we like dead-end alleys. But in this particular circumstance, um, a dead-end alley, which is created by the, um, uh, elimination of the east-west alley, in other words, the north-south alley would then become a dead-end alley, so-called. Um, dead-end alleys in and of themselves aren't a criteria for denying or for a remonstrance in this. They just aren't. Uh, it doesn't appear in the statute, and, um, and therefore, raising an objection on that basis, um, in, in our opinion, um, does not, um, satisfy the remonstrance criteria. Would you go to the next slide, please? Um, there was a, um, as I mentioned earlier, in March of two thousand and nineteen, an alley, a vacation, uh, to, in a petition to vacate the alley, same alley, was filed by Mr. Hubbard and Mr. Woodard. And on May the ninth of two thousand and nineteen, um, there was a, um, an agenda session where, um, Mr. Gelot, who's the Chair of the Board of Public Works, um, made a few comments, and I, and those appear in this, in the minutes. Um, I will paraphrase some of those comments. The first was, "The alley vacation would create a dead-end alley", and Mr. Gelot indicated he knew of no other dead-end alleys in the city. Second, "Criteria number one under state law existed because of the presence of undeveloped land west of the access alley, fronting on Hill Street, and the alley vacation would hinder growth in the neighborhood." Third criteria, the third item, cri, criteria number two, "Access is difficult." Uh, number four, Mr. Gelot mentioned that there was good neighborhood support. Next, he mentioned there were three unfavorable recommendations from Engineering, Community Investment, and at that time, the Area Plan Commission. What is not mentioned in the minutes, but is part of the materials that have been submitted to the council, um, were no objections which came from streets, police, and fire. Then Mr. Gelot, "Be tabled until the petitioners could work with the city to find a solution." So from May the ninth, two thousand and nineteen, until the early part of twenty-twenty, we attempted to work on a solution. Many attempts were made for meetings, um, and it was very difficult to get a meeting. Uh, we finally got a meeting in early twenty-twenty. Uh, we met with the city engineer, Kara Boils, and, um, Alicia Sarnaki, I think is her name. Um, we thought that we made some progress with that meeting, and then we got an email from Alicia, which basically stated the same kind of objections. So at that point, we felt we needed, uh, either to give it up or, uh, continue on with what we believed was a valid alley vacation petition, and we chose, continue on. Um, we had, uh, commis, uh, Councilmember Warner, since it's in his district, come out and take a look at it. We walked the project, we told him what we wanted to do, and we received a, um, indication from Councilmember, uh, Warner that it would be worth our while to, uh, take this up again with the Board of Public Works and then, um, have the council look at it. So that is what we did. On October ninth, I believe it was, we filed another alley vacation petition, basically, um, the same, uh, request. Um, and then on November the tenth, I read to you what the, um, what was, what the unfavorable recommendation was. So the bottom line is, since the early part of two thousand and nineteen, the spring of two thousand and nineteen, the city has not changed its position. Community Investment doesn't like it because it's a dead-end alley and would hinder growth, and, um, also indicated that it would be difficult for access. Next, uh, next, the slide, please. Um, I mentioned that Mr. Gelot said there weren't any dead-end alleys in South Bend. This is a picture of a dead-end alley that, um, appears not too far from the alley that we're trying to vacate. Next slide, please. Um, this is another dead-end alley that is just north of the first one I just showed you, still within a few blocks of the dead-end alley that we're asking, or that, within a few blocks of the alley that we wish to vacate. Um, as you noticed in each of those pictures, there were signs that, um, uh, indicated that there's no outlet, and, um, we certainly would be willing to continue that. Uh, next, next slide, please. I'm sorry, I hit a button and I couldn't see what's going on. Um, this is an aerial view that kind of shows the development issues, um, that Community Investment has indicated are a problem with this alley vacation. As you can see, you can kind of see the evergreens on the right-hand side there, next to, uh, the corner of St. Vincent and St. Louis. That's the Hubbard home, it's a, a large lot there. And just to the south of that is the east-west alley that we're trying to vacate. South of the alley is the Woodard residence, and the, uh, south of the Woodard residence is the, um, home, um, that is owned by an LLC from Las Vegas that rents that property, that was the aggrieved person who now has agreed with Mr. Woodard that he's not, that he, that they are not aggrieved. The yellow is the unimproved area that is what exists in, in, along that little block there. And as you can see, there are two homes to the, to the north, which, um, uh, that's Hill Street over there, so there already are heal, homes, there already are garages there. They, they front on Hill Street, and the South Bend Housing Authority owns that. So if there's going to be development, um, there would have to be something done by the South Bend Housing Authority. Um, and I suppose they would have to do something that would meet the regulations, so there's a buildable lot where there's a large backyard. But the bottom line that I'm trying to get at is the east-west alley that we're trying to vacate has absolutely nothing to do with the ability to develop that property. In fact, if you're gonna develop that property, you have access to the alley, and you also have access to St. Vincent Street, and you have access to Hill Street in order to be able to, um, do construction and to, um, uh, develop that area. Next slide, please. Um, this relates to the difficult criteria, that if this alley is vacated, it creates a difficulty, um, in, um, for aggrieved persons. Um, as mentioned, the aggrieved person who did come and object, um, is now not objecting and is not, therefore, in, um, according to the statute, is no longer an aggrieved person. Um, the east-west alley, as I mentioned, is a hundred-and-sixty-five feet. Uh, the north-south alley from St. Vincent to where it, um, ends at Mr. Woodard's property is a hundred-and-ninety-eight feet. So the difference that folks, um, would have in terms of accessing, accessing their property, should they choose the east-west alley and the north-south alley, is thirty-three feet. As I mentioned earlier, um, the east-west alley is rarely used, and the properties that, um, um, are to the south of Mr. Woodard and the south of the Las Vegas property LLC, um, all use the north-south alley rather than the east-west alley. And Mr. Woodard's access to his garage is from the rear of his property, not from the east-west alley. Next slide, please. Um, you, you mentioned, you, we mentioned earlier Mr. Gelot's proposal for, uh, or his suggestion for a proposed hammerhead easement. This is the proposed hammerhead easement that we wish to, um, develop, uh, to, um, take care of any concerns about any bottlenecks in the north-south alley. As you can see, there are two cross-hatched areas. One is on the north-south, immediately south of the north-south alley, so it basically continues that easement over the Woodard property. And then there is another cross-hatch area, which goes about, um, twenty-two feet into the east-west, what was the east-west alley, so that individuals can back up and turn around, um, or move in and turn around, uh, if that is necessary. So we are preserving what exists right now, frankly, in terms of bottlenecks on the north-south alley, if there's a bottleneck. So there really isn't any change, um, in the problems that the north-south alley, um, has right now, even with the east-west alley, because people aren't using the east-west alley. Um, and if there was a problem, they could access the east-wa, west alley in order to turn around, um, if that was necessary, and we are preserving that. This particular proposed hammerhead easement was dr, was drawn by and provided to us by Mike Dench, uh, who, as you know, is a very qualified, um, surveyor and engineer, um, who actually was involved in some of the subdivision plats, uh, that were, uh, part of the Irish Realty subdivisions. Next slide, please. This, this is our last slide. Um, this slide reflects with the red cross-hatches, all of the neighborhood support that exists. What's very important to note is, those properties to the south of the north-south, um, or of the east-west access, all are in favor or have not objected to this, um, um, alley vacation. The two on the left-hand side there are the Kellys and the Crawfords, and they're gonna speak in favor of the petition. Uh, we have provided the council and would ask that they be made part of the record, um, copies of all of the letters of support, including those of the Kellys and the Crawfords, as well as the emails that were received from police and fire and streets, which found no objection, uh, to the alley vacation. Um, there was a mention that the Board of Public Works was gonna rehear this petition tomorrow. I will tell you that when that was mentioned at the committee meeting, it was the first time I had heard that. Um, I was shocked about that because you'd have thought, since they sent me their decision, they might have told me that they were going to look at it again. I have no idea what they're going to look at again because they've made it very clear what their recommendation is. Uh, they've made that clear since the early part of two thousand and nineteen, and we believe that we have a meritorious application, uh, and ask for your favorable recommendation to the full council at third reading to, uh, grant this petition. And with that, I will end the formal presentation, will answer any questions. Uh, we will have at least three individuals who will be speaking in favor, the Kellys, um, the Crawfords, and Luella Webster, who lives in the, um, in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nusbaum. Um, at this time, um, I would like to go to the council and ask if the council members have any questions of the petitioner.
Madam Chairperson, I forgot to, to, uh, say a very important, uh, part of my, my presentation. Could I have thirty more seconds?
Um, sure.
Um, I wanted to, I wanted to emphasize the commitments that the petitioners will make with regard to this petition. Number one, we will not, we will make sure that there's no curb cut on St. Louis Boulevard. Number two, at our cost, which is going to be about, um, thirty thousand dollars, we will pave the north-south alley from St. Vincent Street all the way down, um, to the hu, the, to the homes that are south of um, to the, to the homes that are south of the east-west alley so that they will have paved access to their driveways. Uh, we will pay, make those, um, improvements based upon city standards. We know that a permit has to be issued, and so we will take, take, we will make that. We will take care of any drainage issues that need to be taken care of as part of that process. We will also, um, record with the, uh, St. Joseph County Recorder, uh, the hammerhead easement, which, as I mentioned, is totally on Mr. Woodard's property. So, he's the petitioner. We don't have to get permission from anybody else, so we are able to do that. We're only asking tonight that the alley be vacated, so at the, if the alley's vacated, Mr. Woodard will get half of, half of the alley, Mr. Hubbard will get half of the alley. If they wish to change that in any way, we would have to go back, uh, through an administrative process and have the lot lines redrawn. We're not looking for that right now. We're just looking for the, the petition to vacate. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilman Warner, you had a question or a comment?
Uh, I have comments. I got, I'll hold my comments till after the public input.
Okay. You're okay. Is there any, uh, council members that have a question for the petitioner? Okay, seeing none at this time, then I'm going to move to the public, uh, portion hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 5520? And Clerk Jones, would you please announce those in order for me since I can't see them all?
I'm looking, um...
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Mary Lou Kelly. Um, Ms. Kelly, could you unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Mary Lou Kelly, and I reside at 1014 North Hill Street. So, I am in south of the easement that, uh, of the alley to be, that we are petitioning or the petitioners are trying to have vacated. And I'm in support of, of, support of this. The east-west alley is not an alley that I ever use, um, because of the drainage issues, because of the standing water, and frankly, there's just no need for me to use it, that the north-south alley is my primary or the only way that I access my property. So, I'd be very supportive of vacating the east-west alley because it doesn't, you know, seem to hold any purpose, and we as a group of neighbors have discussed it, discussed the improvements that we'd like to make to the north-south alley such that everyone has, um, easy access, that's also graded well, maintained well, and all the other things that we'd like to do. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next, next we have Roger Woodard. Mr. Woodard, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm Roger Woodard, 1019 North St. Louis. I'm the petitioner. Um, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for hearing our petition. I don't have a lot to add, uh, other than what's been said, uh, but I do want to give you a little bit of our motivation here. Uh, we moved into this house three years ago. Uh, we intend to live in, in this house for the rest of our lives. Uh, we have not only tried to be residents in this, uh, house, but we are trying to be members of this community and to build this community. This project is intended to improve the appearance of the neighborhood and the usability of the neighborhood and still take into account all those around us, and you'll hear from some more of our neighbors here in a moment. Uh, we are trying to contribute to the community. Uh, we know the limits of the city's resources, and we're trying to take some of that burden off of the city and take that under our own shoulders. And we hope that, uh, you approve this petition so that we can move forward with this. Uh, we appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Greg Crawford. Mr. Crawford, please unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record.
Hello. This is Greg Crawford, um, and Pamela Sterm, and we live at 1018 North Hill Street. And, uh, our property and driveway backed up right to this, um, east-west alleyway here, and we never use it also. Um, it's, it's usually flooded, it's rutted, it's not a place that you want to drive your car down. And we, um, highly support this petition to vacate this for all the reasons that have been stated, and, uh, we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Okay, that exhausts our list of speakers.
All right, thank you, Clerk Jones. Um, at this time, is there anyone, uh, present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 5520?
I don't see anyone, um, expressing interest to speak in opposition of this bill.
Okay. At this point, then, um, the public hearing on Bill 5520 is now closed.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, uh, Councilman. Uh, I think there was, uh, I think Mr. Hubbard wanted to speak and, uh, he was trying to get his hand raised during the
Oh, okay.
...support, uh...
My apologies, I didn't see him.
Yeah, we didn't see his hand.
Mr. Hubbard?
Can you see me now?
I can hear you, go ahead.
Um, I'm Mark Hubbard. I'm one of the petitioners. And, um, I like Roger want to improve the, uh, visual aspects of the neighborhood and the overall quality of the neighborhood. Sitting with me, I don't know if you can see her, is a longtime resident of this neighborhood. In fact, she was born and raised here, and she has great perspective on the, the development of the neighborhood and the use of this alley. Um, many of you know Luella Webster, and she's sitting here in my office and, uh, would like to make a comment.
Okay, Mr. Hubbard?
616 St. Vincent Street.
Okay.
And Luella, what's your address?
Luella Webster, 701 East Howard Street, Indiana 46617. And I would like to say that, um, I've lived here, my family has been in, on this corner for over 60-plus years, and we've seen a lot of changes in the neighborhood. Uh, the piece of property that we're talking about, the alley, when we were kids, were never used as an alley. My family had a garden where Roger's house is, and the house had a garden where, um, Mark's house is. And the only time that the alley was basically used was when my father, who was a trash was there to get the trash barrels from in the back of the properties that were there. Um, I would just like to say that when Mark and Roger moved into the neighborhood, the neighborhood had kind of deteriorated, and development came in through Irish Realty, and it has made a big difference in the neighborhood. This alley has not been used for years. Only, we have potholes, water holes. When it snows, it becomes a little ice pond. Uh, the city does not plow the alley. Uh, when they come down the street, they block the alley, and you know when snow and ice build up on an entrance, it takes forever for it to melt so that you could get through the alley. So, I met with some neighbors when Mark and Roger said that they wanted to do this. I met with the neighbors in the neighborhood to see how they felt, and everybody was in agreeance that this would be something good to do because it will help beautify the neighborhood. Roger wants to make, uh, purification here. If the alley is vacated between him and Mark, uh, there will be a curb so no one can turn in there. The neighbor, there's only about five of us across the street. We would never, haven't used it, so it's the neighbor's recommendation that the council give approval to vacate this alley, and we think it would be a wonderful thing. And as long as those who it's going to affect, everybody's in agreeance, they want and they want to make the north-south alley the entrance to their properties, I think it's a wonderful thing for this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Webster. And thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Okay, at this time, then, um, I'm just going to make sure I didn't miss anybody that was wishing to speak in opposition of this bill?
I don't see anyone, um, wishing to speak in opposition of this bill.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Then at the point, now we are going to close the public hearing on Bill 5520, is now closed. Is there any statements that council members would like to make in regarding this bill? Councilman Troy Warner. Councilman Warner, you wanted to make a?
I do, yes, thank you. I was trying to pull up. So, uh, uh, this was also in, uh, Mr. Newsbaum's presentation. This is the statute. Uh, so the real problem, right, is, is the dead end. We heard that at the committee hearing, that, uh, it, the, the, the dead end is the bad habit and, uh, the, 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 the certain segments of the city departments have issue with. And, uh, unfortunately, the bad habit doesn't fit into the statutory reasons to deny. Um, so they've tried to make an argument about hindering the growth or any development. Um, all, a- as we've heard, all of the houses that are affected by this are newer homes. They've all been built probably within the last 10 years. Uh, Luella would know that for sure. Um, and then all of the neighbors and houses that have been effective had, that would be affected by this have all signed on in support. Um, so, so I don't think that, uh, we, we have enough here to, uh, to deny and vote against the alley vacation. Um, I, I, you know, the streets, fire, and police had no objections to this. Um, I, I asked the council to, uh, to so- vote in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warner. Councilman Kenneth Lee.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Niskowski. Um, um, again, um, hearing from the people in the community about the alleyway and how they never use it or how it's an eyesore and they're looking to improve their neighborhood really is impactful. Um, and as we are looking at what, what do we do, um, you got to listen to what the people want. And, uh, so I just wanted to say that that was impactful to hear the residents and the neighbors who, who voiced their opinion on what they want to happen in their neighborhood. So, I just wanted to make that statement.
All right, thank you, Councilman Lee. Is there any other members that wish to make a statement regarding Bill 5520? Okay, seeing none, I will now then entertain a motion regarding Bill 5520.
I make a motion to send Bill 5520 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I second that motion.
Okay, there's
Before we move forward, I do see Attorney Aladeen DeRose's hand up, Councilwoman Niskowski.
Thank you, President White. I did not see you, Aladeen. Could you, would like to bring something to our attention?
Yes, this is Aladeen DeRose, and I'm acting tonight as attorney for the council. I would recommend that the council add to its motions that the commitments, um, made by, i- in the presentation by the petitioners be part of the motion and that you approve with commitments as indicated by the presenters.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rose. Councilman Warner, would you like to withdraw and remake your motion?
I will amend, I believe, uh, Aladeen, that would be correct to amend the motion.
That would be, yes, that would be correct.
Okay, so I will then make a motion to amend the motion to include all of the, uh, commitments that were made by the presenter, including, uh, closing the curb cut, uh, working with engineering, um, on, uh, any improvements made to the alley.
And I think there was a commitment to pave the alley.
pave the alley.
A commitment to pave the alley, yes.
Thank you. I second amendment
To city standards.
Okay. Thank you. So, there has been an amended motion? Is that correct and been seconded?
As outlined by, um, council, I mean, attorney Aladeen DeRose and amended by Troy Warner.
Okay.
So, now you'll vote on the motion to accept the amended motion.
Thank you. So, can we take a roll call on that, please?
So, this is a roll call to accept the amended motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White? Eight ayes. Thank you.
And your next vote then? Yeah, your next vote then will be to approve the motion as amended.
Thank you. So, can I have a motion to approve the motion as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Clerk Jones, can you please take the roll call?
Yes, just for clarity, could you repeat the, this motion? Could you repeat this motion again? I just want to make sure we got it straight.
So, the second motion would be to approve the amended motion. Is that correct, President White? Or Aladeen?
Yeah, it's a motion to, it's a most, a motion to approve the, um, the bill with the commitments, um, as part of that motion.
So, this is a motion to approve the bill, not send it anywhere? Okay.
Correct.
All right.
With the commitments.
Right, okay. Um, thank you. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. The motion has passed. Okay.
Motion be sent to the full council? Favorable recommendation?
Yes. So, there was, yes, so it'll be pa- it'll be passed, it'll be sent to the council with a favorable recommendation.
That's right.
Okay, so now we are going to go back to Bill 5720. So, Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 5720 a second reading?
Yes. 5720, public hearing reading on an ordinance of the common council of South Bend, Indiana, amending Article 13, Section 14-123 of the South Bend Municipal Code to add definitions for cigar and cigarette, amending Article 13, Section 14-124 of the South Bend Municipal Code to eliminate tobacco specialty bars and tobacco retail stores from places in which smoking is prohibited, amending Article 13, Section 14-127 of the South Bend Municipal Code to include exemptions for tobacco specialty bars and tobacco retail stores in adding 14-127 severalability to the South Bend Municipal Code.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair, the, uh, Bill 5720 was, uh, tabled in committee hearing, uh, tabled indefinitely.
As requested by?
As requested by the bill sponsor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warner. Can I, uh, then have entertain a motion to table Bill 5720 indefinitely as requested by the petition, by the sponsor?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. If there's been a motion and seconded to table indefinitely, Clerk Jones, could you please take the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President White? I'm sorry, Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, the motion has passed and tabled. So, I will now entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the hall and report back to the full council. It has been moved and sec- oh, can I have a motion? Report back to the full council.
Don't move.
Is there a second? All right, thank you, Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Um, Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Davis? Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Okay, he may be having difficulties. President White?
Aye.
Okay, he has seven ayes.
Thank you. The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the hall. Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill 55 dash 20, please?
Okay. 5520, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana to vacate the following described property. The first east-west alley between St. Benson Street and Howard Street from St. Louis Boulevard to first north-south alley, Councilmanic District 4, South Bend, Indiana, 46617.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheila Niskowski, is there a recommendation for, uh, for the council members? Uh, I mean, is there a recommendation regarding Bill 55 dash 20?
Uh, yes, President White, there was a couple recommendations. So at this point, I will just say that it passed as amended um, and that also passed with written commitments, Bill 5520.
Okay, um, Attorney um, DeRose, what should that uh, motion be? If there are no comments from council members at this time? If not, I would like to entertain a motion. Attorney DeRose?
Yeah, the, I, I don't believe this is a substitute bill, so I think it's the motion is just the uh, move for passage with, with incorporation of the commitments by the petitioner.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to move for passage, Bill 5520 with amendments.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
55 dash 20 has passed. We do not have any resolutions. We'll move directly into Bill's first reading. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 58 dash 20 a first reading?
Yes. 5820, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to make miscellaneous technical changes for clarification and consistency and to correct typographical errors in various articles.
Thank you, and now I'd like to entertain a motion to send Bill 58 dash 20 to zoning annexation for committee re- committee meeting, public hearing, council and third reading for December 14, 2020. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Will you please give first reading to Bill 59 dash 20?
5920, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to reformat and clarify the NNZO Northeast Neighborhood Zoning Overlay.
Thank you, I'd like to entertain a motion to send Bill 59 dash 20 to zoning annexation committee for public hearing and for first reading, public hearing at the council level on December 14, 2020.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you, well now, will you now please give first reading to Bill 60 dash 20?
6020, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to revise parking and access standards.
Would like to entertain a motion to send this bill, Bill 60 dash 20 to zoning annexation committee set for committee meet, uh, committee meeting, public hearing and third reading for December 14, 2020.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, will you now give first reading to Bill 62 dash 20?
6220, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend Municipal Code at Section 17 dash 132 and 17 dash 133 of Article 15, Chapter 7 to adjust the low-income customer assistance program rate.
Thank you, would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 62 dash 20 to the utilities committee set for committee meeting, public hearing and council, public hearing meeting for December 14, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Emphatic "aye", I finally get to hold a mini hearing.
President White? Oh, "aye". Eight ayes.
Thank you. Uh, will you now please give first reading to Bill 63 dash 20?
6320, first reading on an ordinance of the South Bend Common Council approving an inter-fund loan from Fund 641 Sewer Works Operations to Fund 610 Solid Waste Operations for cash flow purposes and declaring an emergency in connection with the time specified for its repayment.
Thank you, and now I'd like to entertain a motion to send Bill 63 dash 20 to the utilities committee set for committee meeting, public hearing and third reading and public hearing to the council for December 14, 2020.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in fa- um, I'm sorry, Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
I'm cooking with grease over here, and another emphatic "aye".
Vice President McBride?
Yep.
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Will you now give first reading to Bill 64 dash 20?
6420, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year 2020.
Would like to entertain a motion to send this to Personnel and Finance Committee for public hearing and hearing and for a third reading set for uh, December 14.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Okay, I'm gonna catch my breath for a minute. Clerk Jones, will you please now read, give first reading to Bill 65 dash 20?
6520, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year 2020 of 750,000 from General Fund Number 101, 320,000 from Parks and Recreation Fund Number 201, 33,500 from Gift Donation Request Fund Number 217, 500,000 from Liability Insurance Premium Reserve Fund Number 226, 6,871,834 from COVID-19 Response Fund Number 264, 200,000 from County Option Income Tax Fund Number 404, 2 million from Economic Development Income Tax Fund Number 408, 117,000 from 2017 Parks Bond Fund Capital Fund Number 471, 265,000 from Solid Waste Operation Fund Number 610, 175,000 from Sewer Repair Insurance Fund Number 640, 250,000 from Sewer Works Operating Fund Number 641, 123,000 from Unemployment Compensation Fund Number 713, and 306,525 from Eddie Street Commons Capital Fund Number 759.
Well now I'd like to entertain a motion to send Bill 65 dash 20 to Personnel and Finance Committee for committee meeting, council, uh, third reading for December 14, 2020.
So moved.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you, will, will you now give first reading to Bill 66 dash 20?
6620, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana amending various sections of the South Bend Municipal Code to address the timing and details of various reports that the city administration submits to the common council.
Thank you, would now entertain a motion to send Bill 66 dash 20 to Personnel and Finance Committee for Public Hearing Committee Meeting and Third Reading and Public Hearing uh, for December 14, 2020.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Will you now give first reading? I'm sorry.
Question, how many bills is there for the next meeting so far?
Oh, it's gonna be very, very busy. I have some comments to make towards the end. This is totally un- unusual in regards to our last meeting, but we, we're gonna be quite busy.
Yeah, but who did that?
Well, these bills that somehow-
Was gonna happen?
Yes.
That's unfair.
Well, we'll talk about that.
Because that could have happened last meeting and if there was budget transfers that needed to happen before, in the year, that could have happened last meeting. That, that's unfair.
Okay, we'll talk about that, but this is what we have for first reading. And um, we have had a conversation regarding uh, the filing of some of these bills that could not and were not filed in terms of the previous, this current meeting. So we'll talk about it. But I know that there is some concerns about the length of the meeting and uh, some of these uh, first readings are just going to be thing, uh, ord- and when I say, I won't say ordinary, but there will be um, bills in which uh, we uh, have um, dealt with previously in regards to looking at some of the allocations and things of that nature. So I'll go back to Bill-
Yeah, I got that.
Okay, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, I was just saying, because we can't even, because of the, the timeliness of some of those bills, we can't even carry them over like in January because it needs to happen at the end of the year. That's why I said it was unfair. But we, we definitely talk about it.
Yeah, and you know, and we, we'll get through it, okay? And there will be no new bills.
We'll have to.
Yeah, we have to, there will be no new bills. I'm asking council members to, well, let me get through this and then I'll make some comments. Uh, I think we're at Bill 67 dash 20. Clerk Jones, will you give Bill 50, 67 dash 20?
Yes. 6720, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana amending Chapter 2, Article 5 of the South Bend Municipal Code for pre-approved payment of claims.
Like to entertain a motion to send this to Personnel and Finance Committee for committee meeting and third reading to the council for December 14, 2020 as well as public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Davis? Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? President White?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, will you now give first reading to Bill 68 dash 20?
6820, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana adopting an investment policy for the city of South Bend.
Would entertain a motion to send this to Personnel and Finance Committee for Public Hearing Committee Meeting and Third Reading uh, December 14, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye, the computer was buffering, so I caught, missed the last vote. I don't know what that's about.
Okay. Um, Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?[1759.82]
Aye.
Eight ayes.
And would you give, uh, first reading to Bill sixty-nine dash twenty?
Sixty-nine twenty, first reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property. Street Vacation Luther Court from Notre Dame Avenue, east two fifty, two hundred and fifty feet plus or minus to the end of the right-of-way and Edmund Court from Colfax Avenue North, a hundred and ninety-eight feet plus or minus to Luther Court, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Would like to entertain a motion to send Bill sixty-nine dash twenty to Public Works and Property Vacation, uh, Committee for Committee Meeting, Public Hearing, Third Reading of for November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Councilmembers, as you can tell, there are a lot of bills that set for, um, uh, committee meeting, second reading and third reading for, um, December fourteenth. I will, uh, get with our attorney and, uh, reach out to the administration to see if there's any of these bills that could be heard, um, at our first meeting in December, and I will get back with you as soon as possible. Um, I would now ask, we're un, um, I'm sorry, we're at the point of unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business at this time? Councilmembers, any unfinished business?
Uh, President White, I just would like a point of clarification. Our next meeting, we only have December fourteenth meeting, right, in December? That's it?
That's, that's correct. This will, if we're able to move some of these bills, uh, forward, we will hear them in January.
All right, thank you.
No, you're welcome. Seeing that there's, um, any, that's, that we don't have any unfinished business, uh, new business to update. Most of you have received an update in regards to the county city building operations that was sent out on Thursday, uh, November nineteenth. And so, uh, again, this will be placed on not only our website, but also the city clerk website. And, uh, if you come in contact with any of your residents, please share this with your residents, and hopefully, I think we'll be sending, if we have not already done so, send this out to the various neighborhood associations. Uh, just a reminder that, um, the last meeting for the common council for the year two thousand and twenty will be Monday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. And so, uh, we'll now move to privilege of the floor. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting, uh, to speak under privilege of the floor?
No, I do not see anyone waiting in the lobby to speak, um, on privilege of the floor.
Oh, thank you. Then seeing no one, I would like to, uh, wish each and every one of you a happy, safe Thanksgiving. We know that, uh, this Thanksgiving, uh, is not gonna be the norm. Uh, I'm asking you to ensure that you practice as much, uh, social decency. Uh, remind, you know, pray for those who are experiencing, um, tragedies in their lives, uh, those who are without food, shelter. This is a time to be thankful, but it's also a time for us to pray for our citizens that this, uh, will not be a good, uh, season of Thanksgiving. But we know that working together, we can pull the, through this. And again, I wish each and every one of you, the council members, our residents, the administration, a very happy Thanksgiving, and always, as I close out our meetings, please stay safe and healthy.
Thank you, President White.
Yeah, pray for, uh, for all of us. Uh, my grandson, uh, is not doing well, just got a notice, so he's running high fever, so, uh, just, you know, it's a time to, you know, that we're going through, but we get through this together. So everyone, please stay safe and healthy, and I did see, uh, our attorney, Bob Palmer, I think I saw that he logged in, and so we want to keep all and everyone holed up in prayers as they go through some challenging times in their lives. Take care, and I'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you all.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Aladeen. Mayor Attorney DeRose, thank you so much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure, always. Thank you. And happy Thanksgiving to all.
Same to you.
Thank you, President White.
Thank you.